Welcome everyone, and this is really Holly's meeting. So I'm gonna unmute her and send it over and she will lead us forward from here.
Welcome, everybody. The Finance Committee meeting for April 13th is now in session. And I have 6:01 PM according to my computer clock. And to kick us off, do we have a need for an executive session?
We do, Madam Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to convene into executive session to discuss matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code Section 122, 121, 22G5. The executive session, the executive session should include the following. Council President, Council Members, Chief Ward, Law Director, Mayor, Auditor, Service Safety Director, and the Treasurer.
Do I have a second?
Did you hear me?
No.
Go ahead, Melody.
Okay, second.
And now I have to have a roll call vote. So Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Very good, we are in executive session. If your name wasn't one of those mentioned, if you could just pop out of the room very quickly and check in on the live stream and then the live stream will indicate when we are back and you can rejoin us at that time as well. We're gonna pause for just a moment to make sure Shane has taken us off as we enter into executive session. All right, well Shane confirms we're back on the air, so Holly, take it away.
Okay, great. So the first resolution to come before the Finance Committee is Temporary Resolution 59-20. It is a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and to amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in the VAWA fund. This resolution is to allow for the purchase of two laptops and two docking stations to replace the two desktop computers that are failing actually using the VAWA fund. And Randall, do you have, I know that originally we didn't know we needed two computers and the two desktops kinda took a tank.
Yes, thank you, thank you Chairman. Yeah, we had, so we've had some redundancy over the years where the attorneys had laptop computers that they took into court with them to use some of the technology and everything that was available in there. And then they also had, you know, a desktop computer. So, you know, with expenses and things like that, we decided in talking to them, it's like, we don't need to duplicity anymore. So as we've had some computers, towers, desktop towers go out, we're just basically gonna replace those with two laptops and the docking stations, of course, just to allow them to basically hook into the monitors on their desks. So that'll be a cost saving for us again. We're gonna use this money, VAWA money, we got approval for from OCGS to use it. And so these two computers, laptops and docking stations will go to our two domestic violence prosecutors or the two prosecutors handling those domestic violence dockers.
Sorry, I need to unmute, this is tricky.
Oops, sorry.
Um, so we're gonna do one reading, Mrs. Bobbitt, will you be my second?
I will, I will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next resolution is Temporary Resolution 60-20. This is a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and to amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in the General Fund 101. This is the resolution to cover the fire department's overtime budget, which has been depleted due to one retirement, two resignations, two long-term sick leaves, and two injury leaves. Tom?
Uh, thank you Holly, I appreciate it. Okay, so I've spoken, traded emails with Chief Ward, I've spoken with the mayor and others over the weekend. I spoke to Paul on the way in. My understanding is, based on the fact that we have other people coming back into the fold, that we have enough money in the overtime account at this point in time for two more pays at least. So my suggestion here is that we read this, have first reading on this tonight. Two weeks from now, get an assessment on what the overtime was for the ninth pay period and then determine if we need to appropriate from then. But what I wanna share with folks is this COVID-19 problem is a big problem for us in the general fund. Well, it's actually, you'll find out from Paul that it's also affecting our enterprise funds. But, you know, with the loss of income tax, loss of, of basically interest rates, we're gonna see a loss of local government funds and potentially loss of medic runs since there may not be as many medic runs and/or transports. This, this is, we're gonna take a big hit in the general fund in the absence of any unrestricted federal funding that we may get in what I'm gonna call round four of, you know, COVID-19 stimulus, which is being discussed right now in Congress. And there's a lot of politicization to this particular $250 billion that they're talking about right now. So if you'll indulge me for a moment, I wanna go through a few things just so I can level set every, everyone kinda where we are. I met with, at Holly's, at Holly's permission and request, I met with the mayor, the auditor, the treasurer, and the Service Safety Director on Saturday, and we really kinda level set where we are and talked about, you know, what is the impact that we're going to see? And so I'm gonna take you, you know, and also you got a, you got a nice file today from around 4 o'clock from Treasurer Wolfinger. And in that file, specifically on page five, it's a really, really good piece of information. The whole packet's good, but on page five, it's basically called General Fund, General Fund Income Major Categories Only. At the bottom of that page, you will see where Treasurer Wolfinger just basically put the reduction in general fund monies that we hypothetically could see, because we don't know for sure at this point in time. We don't have any actuals to compare to yet. But in just spitballing to his best knowledge, you know, you look at potentially a $2.5 million hit to the general fund, which is somewhere between, you know, 10% and 15%. And we hope it's that low. But if it, if it, the longer this goes, the more that that's gonna impact us. So, so I wanna kinda take you through some of the discussions we had. We've got to save every dollar that we have, folks. We can't have, you know, for this overtime, we can't have an appropriation of $200,000 right now because we really don't have $200,000 to appropriate absent of any, of any influx of cash. So we need to be really mindful of every dollar we appropriate going forward. Now, let's talk a little bit about the upsides, I wanna talk about that a little bit. The upsides being the Bureau of Workmen's Compensation. Basically, we're going to get a credit and some other dividends. And Trish, do you wanna talk about that or do you want me to go off of what you sent me? I'm happy to turn the floor over to you, because it's good news.
As for the BWC, I called, oops, I'm muted, sorry.
Yeah, you're good, you're good. We're good.
So are you good now?
Yep, you're good.
Okay. And I contacted the Bureau of Workers' Comp today to find out, of course, in the payment section, they weren't quite sure, since the meeting was on Friday, or the email that I sent out to Tom that stated that we were getting a a news release of getting our 2018 annual premiums back, which equate to, for the general fund, about $342,866 back to the general fund. And the enterprise funds would realize about $144,471. But when I contacted BWC, the people that we get our payments and refunds from, they hadn't heard anything yet since it's fairly new. We are realizing a small rebate discount from them for the general fund and enterprise funds. But hopefully, they'll be processing that rebate here soon with them. But not sure if that's in addition to our normal refund or if it's just us getting our normal refund that much quicker. So I'm gonna keep in contact with them and online and make sure that as soon as I see that refund coming online to be issued to us, I'll let everybody know.
Very good, so that's a little bit of good news for starters. Thank you, Trish. The other thing that we know is out there through the first three rounds of, you know, COVID resources passed by Congress is also federal reimbursements for actual COVID-19 expenses that we've incurred, which I assume most of that would be in fire and police, and certainly in protective gear and other things like that. Any, any dollar that we can, we spend, we can get reimbursement. Now, that's not gonna be a big number, but every little bit helps. And Paul, I don't know if you wanna kinda just give a couple sentences on that, if you wouldn't mind, please?
Yes, Mr. Stone, I do believe that we, we are tracking everything we possibly can, not only personnel issues, which could be a huge help to us on paying for the funding, especially if someone is down ill for COVID-19. That affects our overtime budget. So, but also on all the product we're doing, we're still waiting from our local EMA to get a couple of units that would be able to spray down the interior of a vehicle like our police, our fire, our transit buses. Because we're spending a lot of time and effort and product just sanitizing our vehicles. Our police, for instance, anytime they start a shift, they go to the same vehicle and they sanitize that. And then the next shift goes on and does the same thing. But also in our medics and our transit, there's a huge amount of cleaning going on to that. We're grateful that we're still able to provide transit to many of our residents that aren't able to get around to go to the grocery store, doctor's office. But we're tracking all of that and I've had personal talks and emails to do that. We don't know exactly how we're gonna be able to do this, it'll come federal money through the state, eventually through us. And we're ready and poised to provide the documentations to leverage every bit of funding that we can get for this COVID-19 issue.
Very good, thank you. So again, it's reimbursement, they're reimbursed, but again, any dollar we can put in our pocket, we're gonna need to do that. So thank you for that, Paul, I appreciate that. What I wanna share with you a couple is the round four opportunity, I call it the round four opportunity. It's what's being discussed in the Congress today. It's a $250 billion bill, which is referred to the Coronavirus Community Relief Act. And I also wanna share with you some, I'm gonna read a little bit from the National League of Cities, as well as the endorsement by the Ohio Municipal League to help you understand what those groups are advocating that this particular bill do. And effectively, it's, their concern is that the Community Care, or the CARES Act basically stuck a population threshold in there of 500,000. So there's, I think it's 36 cities that actually qualify for that money. Everything else below that, while there's money there, is kind of a trickle down in that discretion of other folks, not us. So what they're advocating is a bill that would send funds directly to those smaller municipalities in the Coronavirus Community Relief Act. The bill provides $250 billion in aid from the federal government to local governments with a population of less than $500,000. The CARES Act only provided the 36 largest cities in the nation with access to direct federal aid. This bill, the Coronavirus Community Relief Act, creates a path to receive direct federal aid for the other 99.82% of municipalities that were shut out of the CARES Act. You hear that 99.8% of communities were shut out of that federal funding. So now you know why the National League of Cities, as well as the Ohio Municipal League is on this. And I'm gonna read just another paragraph and then I'll be done with that. But additionally, while the CARE Act limits the use of funds to cover necessary expenditures, which I just talked about and Paul did as well, the Coronavirus Community Relief Act allows units of local government to use allocated funds to cover, funds to cover losses. Meaning that stipend to us would be for us to plug the hole in our general fund that we're, that we're seeing today and what we're talking about right now. So that is the key behind, you know, the cities and villages will need federal assistance to endure through the economic distress that will result from increased costs and just decreased tax revenue because of COVID-19. This change will help local communities through upcoming revenue shortfalls. Mayor Scheffler sent you a template of a letter in a Word document that I would ask that you basically, you know, personalize it to Senators Brown and Portman. I think the version he has is to Congress and Stivers. We need to all send those letters. And I know it seems silly, but at the end of the day, if we don't send them, you know, I just, I just gotta believe that we have to inundate those folks and let them realize we're hurting at the local, we're going to be hurting really, really bad at the local level if we don't have some sort of economic relief given to us to cover the losses and not just reimbursements. So I want you to know that, you know, we, that's kind of the come that we're betting on, so to speak. And Mayor, I don't know if you wanna add something to that, because I know the mayor has been working through all of his mayor alliances and his, his morpsy and whatever, whatever soapbox he can hop on to talk about making sure that local, those 99.8% of municipalities aren't forgotten in this process. So Mayor Scheffler, if you would share that, I would be appreciative.
Let me, let me go back first to the CARES Act. And it established a fund of, which set aside $350 billion for, no, it was $150 billion for states and cities and municipalities. Ohio's share of that was $4.5 billion. That was, payments went directly from the feds to communities or local governments with populations of 500,000 or more. In Ohio, the city of Columbus is the only city that has more than 500,000. There are about eight counties that have populations of over 500,000. So they're getting money directly from the feds, that's limited to 45% of the $4.5 billion. So that leaves $2.5 billion for everybody else. There is nothing stipulated in the CARES Act about how that is distributed. There is no news, all the mayors associations and county commissioners associations, and everybody has been trying to find out how that money's gonna be distributed. Is any of it going to come to cities, counties, townships, villages, et cetera? Nobody seems to know, or at least to admit, how that's gonna be distributed. But it is up to the state of Ohio to do that. So that's the money that Tom was talking about, that we may get reimbursed COVID-related expenses. Supposedly, that's what that's for. Again, we don't know how, we don't know the mechanism, we don't know when we're gonna get the money. Which brings up round four of these relief acts that Congress is working on now. So the Ohio Municipal League has estimated that cities in Ohio, and by the way, Ohio is the only state in which cities rely on city income tax for their revenue. We're the only state out of 50. Most cities get their revenue from property taxes. In Ohio, most of the cities get their revenue from city income tax. But the Ohio Municipal League has estimated that cities are gonna lose between 20% and 40% of their income tax revenue. For us, that's somewhere between $4 and $8 million. We have reasons to believe that we may not be hit quite that hard because some of our larger employers are governments like the county, healthcare institutions like the hospital, schools, Lancaster City Schools and the city of Lancaster, and some other businesses that are still operating. So, but we don't know. We have no idea, it's gonna be a month or two before we have any idea of what the impact for us is going to be. So as Tom said, we have to carefully watch what we spend, minimize overtime, minimize purchases, et cetera, in order to safeguard what we have, because we could be in a serious financial situation here in the near future. Does that cover what you wanted to hear, Tom?
Yeah, pretty much, and we appreciate all that you're, you know, all the fist banging that you're doing, you know, on behalf of Lancaster. So thank you for that. I'm gonna throw a curve ball and just, I'm gonna go to Mike Tharp before I go to Paul to talk about the special revenue funds and the enterprise fund. Mike, you wanna go ahead and just talk about the impact to the Parks Department? I know it steals your thunder about your legislation, but it will certainly help set it up.
No, I'd be more than happy to. The Parks Department in the beginning of 2020 here, that special, or the special fund that all of the recreation revenue comes into, $25,293, I think, is what we collected in the spring so far. That's for soccer registrations, that's sponsorships, that's for flag football registrations. And now all of those events have been canceled. The sponsorships right now, to this point, have not been, the sponsors have not asked for their funds back. But right now, we're seeing somewhere between north of $10,000, hopefully less than $15,000 of that $25,000 being asked for as a refund back to the participants. And we understand that, the financial hardships of a lot of, that $35 could come in handy. But it's going to be a huge impact for us as we move forward also.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, Mike. And again, you'll probably have a little more to say. But again, it's, you know, we think it only touches our general fund and it doesn't. It's touched the whole city this time, which is a little, which is a little different. So, and then I'm gonna ask Paul, Paul, if you'd be so kind to talk about kinda the impacts to LDOT and Enterprise that we're seeing and kinda set the table for expectations there, please, that'd be awesome.
Well, as the mayor mentioned, we are so heavily dependent on income tax. And with the loss of a lot of people not working here, it's gonna impact even our enterprise fund, special, special revenue funds. Just as you heard from our Parks Levy supports the Parks Department, so they're anticipating it. But also, we're, I'm gonna see that go throughout our enterprise funds as well. Let me give you some examples, like the water department. We are right now seeing about 200,000 gallons of water per day that is not requested. Of course, this could be the use of water that normally would be used at businesses, restaurants, schools, churches, that are not meeting right now. Could be a lot of, lot of people. So that, of course, means revenue that is lost. As you well know, our sewage department, water pollution control is dependent on the water supply and also treatment of that. So that decreases the revenue from water pollution. Our sanitation department, which is also another essential service that must continue. We have many businesses that no longer need their trash service. And so we're being very helpful as they request it. We noticed we're reducing their service to the dumpsters or whatever the needs are to try to be helpful to our businesses. But that is a loss of revenue right there, you know. And then I look at LDOT, let me go to Utilities Collection Control, which collects the funding for all of these enterprise funds. As you know, many people are without jobs and so they're probably making partial payments. And we can understand that, but that just means revenue is not collected at this time. And it has a ripple effect through our enterprise departments. LDOT being a special revenue, we, as many of you know, you can just drive out there and see that there's not many people driving like they used to. Vacations are being canceled, some people are not able to go to work. And so we're seeing a loss of fuel needed and that directly impacts our needs at our Department of Transportation. We're estimating, we're gonna plan for at least about a $200,000 decrease in revenue from our fuel tax, which means some of the projects, some of the improvements we wanted to do, we're probably gonna hesitate on and see how this year's goes. I've actually, some of these departments, we're, we're not replacing some people, we have openings. So we're being very careful about hiring, replacing, especially when we have a retirement coming up. But LDOT, yes, a 3 mil levy, all that money's gonna be leveraged, because that's not income tax base. We're still going forward with our 3 mil levy, street improvement projects, which, you know, you'll be seeing some work right now on those streets. There are concrete subcontractor out there preparing some ADA ramps on all the intersections and corners. And, but, but we're seeing a revenue loss in LDOT, so we are leaving some positions open. Just to let you know, Mr. Stone, as you and I have talked, this truly is impacting every aspect of our city, not just the general fund, which we're greatly concerned about, hugely concerned about. But we're trying to be very prudent. We put out a lot of minnows, memos, and speaking to everybody to try to reduce their expenses. And if that means not doing certain projects, we're gonna move forward with that. We still have to deliver, deliver essential services, but we'll get through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, I appreciate that. Again, it just shows you, it's cutting across the entire city. I want to go to Bob Wolfinger real quick. Bob, if you can kinda give us a kind of a quick overview of what you've sent, and then I'm sure Bob will make himself available for anyone that wants to talk through these documents. They're very rich in data and it helps you understand mostly about the general fund, but how fragile, kinda let you know how fragile lost dollars are in the general fund. Also tells you about how it's constructed. So Bob, if you would kinda give us an overview of what you shared with council, I think your, your work has been very good and I appreciate it so much.
Thank you, Tom. There's a lot of material, as I mentioned in my email, the material changes probably daily. And I've been asked to try to get some idea of where we are, where we're gonna end up, what we're gonna look like in June, September. And there's absolutely no way to really accurately forecast that. One thing I have done, the first document was the monthly receipts of the income tax department. And what I've done, I've tracked that for nine years and I've done an average of collections each month. And because some months, like April, will be higher, and then about two-thirds of the way down, it'll show 2012 to 19. That reflects the average percentage of the total collections for each year of how much that is. For instance, January, we normally collect 9.17, 7.55 in February and so on. Then I'll fill those actual numbers in as we go and I'll use the new budget, the 21,200,000, that we would collect 9.1%. It would say we should have collected 1.8 million, 1.9, we collected 1.8. So we're a little bit behind, so on and so forth. If I could, the percentage throughout the year, as of right now, we're about $270,000 short on reaching our goal. Now, obviously, there's a lot, lot of water over the dam on that. And this year is not a typical year, because the income tax has moved to July 15th and things of that nature. The next document I think Tom alluded to is the, also with the income tax, and there's three components. We have individuals filing returns, we have withholdings, which is most everybody who works for somebody, they do withholding. And that accounts for 77% of our income tax collections throughout the year. And then the businesses, that would be a, would not be a subchapter S, that would fall under the individual, because the way the tax code sets, but a mom and pop business, if you will, and they collect about 11%. So of our budget, gross budget of 21,200, I had four columns of just guessing what happens if we're 10% short, 15, and so on. And obviously, you can see the red numbers. And the balance of this is narrative explaining where our top 25 withholding customers or businesses account for 45% of the collections. And you'll see that healthcare, government, schools, compile quite a high percentage. And that's why I think we might not be hit as hard, assuming the schools are still working in accounting and so on and so forth. And the healthcare, obviously, is very, very critical. But it is what it is and we have fluctuations, but it's a tool to try to track where we are. The next page is kind of a budget forecast. And all that basically is, I've got broken down as income, expense, and the net from our approved budget. And for instance, under the budget expense, we have the firm numbers of $27.96 million. We've already, well, actually, we didn't pass the 200,000 tonight. We've al, well, actually, we didn't pass the two hundred thousand tonight. So right now we stand at eighty-three thousand. That's on a, that's additional appropriations from unencumbered, uh, carryover. Now, as we walk through here, you'll see as of March thirty-first, we actually collected, um, more money the first quarter than we had expenses, which means we're at a million seventy-six thousand dollars to the good. The, the next, the, the end column deals with your, uh, remaining year. As you'll see, uh, expenses far exceed the income and our budget was probably about one point three million dollars less revenue than incurred expenses, which is very typical for the last fifteen or twenty years because we work through our ongoing carryover. The far column i- is what I wanna focus on. At the end of the year, we had five point three million dollars in carryover. Otherwise monies that weren't expended last year, it can work towards this year's budget. The general fund, the fire, and the fire and police. Now, the, there's a general fund portion of fire and police that was included in the four point seven number. So right now, for the balance of the year, if, if we cover every dollar of income and if we spend every dollar we expensed or budgeted, we'd be in a whole one point nine million. How do we cover that? Well, we can take our five point three million dollar carryover. Then we can also take our Fund Two Sixteen, which is our income tax. You might call that perhaps a somewhat of a rainy day fund. That's taxes we've collected over and above appropriations for the last several years. That, if the income tax doesn't get collected per budget, then we'll, that number will decrease because we'll have to move money from that account. And the important thing about a carryover-
By the way, we don't wanna do that.
No, we don't wanna do that.
It's a bad thing.
Yes. The twelve thirty-one required, required carryover into twenty-twenty-one is essentially working capital to meet payroll and lo, all of our expenses until we have a big slug of money comes in from the county, our real estate tax settlements, which journey comes in in March or towards the end of March. And if you recall, each year, Trish brings in a piece of legislation for us to ask for money ahead of time, which is why we get it in March and not April. So we need roughly nine hundred thousand dollars just to pay the bills in a, in a subsequent following year. So right now, if you add all that together, our cash position is four point one, which is fine. But as our expenses continue to grow with the virus and normal operating, that will decrease. And if we don't generate the revenue, that will also decrease that number. So it just kind of, we're tracking each month to try to see where we are on the cash flow. And another, the next item I have is a budget salary and benefits for two thousand twenty. Now, that document shows the, the total fire and police salary benefits. Um, that would be under the business, the category Journal Ledger Fifty-One Hundred, which includes salaries, overtime, retirement, uh, PRS, insurance, and, uh, so on, so forth. And you, you can see that we have seventeen million dollars in expenses, again, if all those are expended. For that, and the total fire and police budget, which would include equipment replacement, supplies, and this and that, non-salary items, is nineteen-two. So you look at the, the, the budget for fire and police, it's eighty-eight point four seven percent of the total budget, which is tight. It doesn't allow a lot of money for the, the day-to-day operating things that both departments need. Then if you look at the total general fund salary and benefits, that includes the fire and police, the whole nine yards, twenty-three point four million dollars of our total budget of twenty-eight million dollars is salary-related expenses, which, uh, generates eighty-three point seven two percent. Um, and then I just threw in there, the fire and police budgeting accounts for sixty-eight point eight percent of our total budget. So tho, those are the departments and how the money, where the money's spent and, and what we need to look at going forward and how sensitive all these things are to the, the bottom line of the city.
Uh, let me just, uh, let me interrupt you for just a second, Bob. I see Holly's hand up. Holly, if you wanna unmute if you have a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to double check. If you go back to the carryover slide or the carryover page, that care, that carryover is important to our credit rating as well, correct?
That, absolutely. The, the, the city is rated AA Three, uh, which is a solid, good credit rating. Um, and they measure that and Trish should jump in any time. But they, they'll measure that based on our carryover, our liquidity. They'll look at the community, uh, the unemployment. There's a lot of factors that goes into it that's, that's important. And we, you're right, we need, Trish, probably, uh, twenty-five percent carryover from year-
That's a G, that's a GF O A and a kind of a Moody's kind of bare minimum. They wanna see twenty-five percent of your current year's budget as a carryover, which supports, um, all your expenses starting the beginning of the year before you start getting your real revenue. And so it's kind of a base that they look, when you start dropping below that is when you get on their radar.
Right. And right now that we would need to have five point two million dollar carryover to meet that twenty-five percent threshold.
That was my question.
Pardon me?
That was my question. What does that carryover, bottom line, what does that carryo, carryover have to be?
And it fluctuates year to year based upon what the budget is. Twenty-five percent of your, your budget that you have, your expense budget.
Which goes back to Tom's point of, we don't want to spend that money.
Correct.
No, we do not wanna spend the money, but, but you, we have this balancing act that we gotta, as a government, we gotta provide certain services for our citizens. But the, the big challenge is you're, you could sacrifice your credit rating, um, it's the sake of that. But there again, um, we cannot run a deficit. The only government can run a g, deficit is the federal. If there's a certain reduction, we, we, we tracked it, the, the larger items, um, and no need to go over that again. And I'll be happy to take any questions. I know Tricia and I would be, are available to talk to any of you anytime. Um, give us a call, whatever.
Okay, well, thank you, Bob. Folks, that's, uh, that's an awful lot of information, but it's information you need to have and understand. Um, spend some time with Bob. He loves talking about this. You could obviously know that. Um, and he'd be happy to walk you through any, any of the figures, how he gets there, um, a, a, and help you understand them. And, uh, you know, he's, uh, he's, he's a great resource to, to, to have. I wanna talk about one final thing. And that's, um, you know, in, in the absence of any funding from the federal government, um, any, uh, you, you know, a, a tax levy passing, uh, on April the twenty-eighth. Um, we do have the commuter tax that we, that is a council, uh, approved item. And, uh, you know, that commuter tax, which is the commuter tax credit, actually, uh, of one percent. You know, I, I, uh, actually, ironically, all three of your finance people, uh, get that. But, uh, you know, it's a one percent credit on your taxes because we pay other municipalities as an opportunity. I mean, we, that generate it's, I, I wanna say somewhere between one, one point six, one point eight, two million dollars a year. You have an opportunity to rescind that tax credit on a short-term basis or a permanent basis. And again, that'll be wildly unpopular. But at the end of the day, depending on how big of an impact we have financially to the, uh, because of the COVID virus, and if this thing, you know, extends out beyond May and June and July, uh, we're gonna be in dire straits, folks. So you, as a collective body here, we, as a collective body here, need to understand all the opportunities that we have in our, in our toolkit. Uh, no one has talked about going there in quite some time. I think the last time we talked about this was during the Great Recession in two thousand nine, ten, eleven, twelve. But, uh, you know, and it, it wouldn't be a popular thing to do, but at the end of the day, um, you know, desperate times call for desperate measures and nobody saw, you know, a pandemic like this , uh, really shutting down the world for, you know, uh, two to three months, no, or, or, or longer. So, and we hope it's certainly not that. So, uh, if you need more information about the commuter tax, I can also tell you that Bob is acutely, um, skilled at talking about that as well. So, uh, I know we got into a lot just on one piece of legislation, but we needed, we all, we, we got a lot of new folks on here. All need to understand what's before us, our decisions are ahead. Uh, we are the appropriating body, okay? The administration is, you know, they basically set forth the plan, but we, at the end of the day, appropriate what the city can spend and can't spend. So, uh, I thought it was important tonight that we spend a lot of time on this and I wanna thank all the folks that participated uh, with, with, you know, giving, you giving some depth to all the concerns that we have. So, um, are there any general questions for anybody, not necessarily me, just for the, for, for the group in general?
Yeah, um, so I have a, a question as it relates to, you know, Bob has been kind enough to estimate what the potential effects of lost revenue might be, given those circumstances. And while I understand that the administration is, is, you know, not necessarily hiring for positions that are open, but what's the next step? You know, what are, what are some, I hate to say it, additional cost-cutting measures that, you know, what's, what's Plan A, what's Plan B, what's Plan C, given if that revenue does not come in?
I think that's a Mayor Scheffler question.
Yeah, I'm trying to, uh, uh, he, he's got me on. So today I have a lot of feedback. I sent, um, a, an email to all the city department heads, asking them to present to me within a week a budget showing a ten percent decrease from what, uh, council approved in December. So that will certainly include some personnel cuts, um, and, uh, who knows what else, but the plan, get that plan rolling and it is in works.
Okay, Holly, is it a good answer for you? It's a start, anyway. I can tell by the look in your eyes. I know, and, and we certainly hope we don't have to go deeper, but, and, and, and Mayor Scheffler and, and Paul know that, you know, to Bob, Bob's point, we have to be balanced. So, other questions? Well, very good. Thank you, folks, for, um, for indulging a long discussion, but I, I think it was, uh, very well needed. So, with that, Holly, I think I'm done and you can go back to your agenda.
Okay, so just to confirm on the resolution that we had that lengthy discussion on, sixty dash twenty, uh, we are going to at least do two readings, correct?
Correct. We're gonna see where we are, uh, in two weeks. Um, in, in talking with Service Safety Director Martin, he thinks we have two more pays covered. So we won't appropriate until we absolutely have to.
Okay, and Tom, I have you as the second on that.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, moving on to the next resolution, sixty-one dash twenty is a resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and to amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in the Park Fund Two Twelve. Uh, this resolution, as I understand, is to allow for the transfer funds to cover the cost of refund requests due to events such as spring soccer and flag football being canceled due to COVID nineteen. Mrs. Teener, this is your resolution.
Yes, it is. Yes. Unfortunately, with the COVID nineteen, it's affected our parks, uh, greatly. And, um, so people would make paid fees, like Mike had talked in the discussion, and we need to reimburse these people. So that's, uh, I think Mike, uh, already explained it very well. So unfortunately, you know, that's just what we have to do and it's hitting every department. And, uh, it will be, if, uh, okay, to suspend and Mrs. Bobbitt will be my second?
Yes.
Okay, I've got it. Any additional questions for sixty-one dash twenty? Okay, moving on. Uh, temporary resolution sixty-two dash twenty. Uh, this is a resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the hauling and disposal of municipal solid waste for the City of Lancaster Sanitation Department. Uh, this resolution is to basically allow for advertising of bids for hauling and disposing of solid waste as the current contract will expire at the end of this year. Um, Miss, Mrs. Teener, this is your resolution as well.
Well, this is the last year of a seven-year contract and, um, the sanitation department needs to go out to bid and contract. And so this is something, this is a thing they do every seven years, so this is a normal piece of legislation. And, oh, I'm so sorry, um, uh, suspension. And, uh, Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. Any questions for Mrs. Teener on sixty-two dash twenty? It's pretty straightforward. Okay, moving on. Temporary resolution sixty-three dash twenty. Uh, this is a resolution authorizing the Lancaster Fire Department to apply for the twenty-twenty Homeland Security Staffing for adequate fire and emergency response, otherwise known as the SAFER Grant. Um, Mrs. Bobbitt?
Thank you, Holly. Uh, this is a wonderful opportunity that we have to participate in this grant. Is Chief Ward on right now that he could add a little bit to this?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, yes, I'm on. Uh, this just came out last week. This is one of the grants that we used to apply for back eight or ten years ago. This is a grant that would add, uh, personnel to the department at somewhat of a cost. It's a thirty-six-month grant. The first two years, uh, the federal government, if you received it, would pay seventy-five percent of the cost of the new hires. And eligible costs would be salaries, insurance, workers' comp, pension plans, et cetera. On the third year, they would pay up to thirty-five percent. Um, of course, the, the thing about SAFER is it's to enhance your, your safety for your citizens and the firefighters. Um, it's not to supplant. In other words, you cannot, um, necessarily go lower than, for example, if we wrote the grant and turned it in on May fifteenth and our staffing was at sixty-six, or you were awarded the grant in July and your staffing was at sixty-six, you can't go lower necessarily. So you'd have to go, start at sixty-six, and if we wrote the grant for, for four more, then you would be at seventy, but you can't, you gotta stay in that range. Unless you applied for a waiver and they may or may not grant that. That's all.
Okay, and it, um, and you had asked that we only have one reading on this tonight. Is that correct?
Yeah, really what we wanna do is go ahead and write it. And then if we receive it, then you guys can vote on it whether you want to receive it or not. That's what happened in the past. Uh, we, actually, we did take one back in two thousand and eleven. We had to give it back and then we wrote it again. And then had massive layoffs. So we never actually took any monies from the SAFER Grant. So we could write the grant, which I'd like to kind of move forward on. And then if we were to get it and we would know in July, uh, then you guys will have a better feel for what the environment looks like with the, uh, the revenues. And if it's something where, uh, our numbers now aren't sustainable, then we wouldn't take it. Or you would vote not to take it.
Exactly. So I, I will be asking for, uh, one reading tonight and, uh, Mr. Matlin is my second on this, please. Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Okay, great. Uh, are there any other resolutions to come before finance? I don't see any. Um, do we have any departmental updates?
Reese has got her hand up.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hey, the law director had a public records training, um, that's mandated for all elected officials to be, take once during their elected period. All those that were signed up should have gotten an email that that meeting has been canceled because it was scheduled for May first. If you did not get that, please let me know and I'll send you the link so that you can take it or a motion can be made for me to take that training, but I suggest serving their first term.
Okay, I got part of that because you broke up. Okay, I got part of that because you broke up. So let me just repeat it to make sure that I got it, okay? The Law Director had a public records training that all elected officials have to take if, if they're new, because I already took mine, right? So if they're new, they have to take this, no, everybody has to take it? Okay.
Everyone has to take each new term. So if you have an election now, you take it in the first or second year, and then if you're re-elected, then you have to take it again, or you can designate me as a proxy. But I suggest new members take it that have never served before, so they can hear some of the information.
And there was an email that came out that it was canceled?
It's sent out. If you did not get that, let me know, and I can forward that to anyone that wishes, or I'll automatically just go ahead and forward it to them.
Okay, okay, so if you did not get the email, please let Clerk Sandy know. I did not get the email.
I'll go ahead and just send it out to everyone.
Okay.
And then Holly, we'll just, what, what we'll need is a list of people who want Teresa to stand in for them, and we can pass that motion at the next, at the next council meeting.
Okay. Okay, got it. Are there any other departmental updates? David, I don't see any. Did anybody raise their hand?
I don't see anyone looking to, to gain the floor.
Okay, great. So we will move on, and I'll turn it over to you for tonight's meeting prep.
We have a couple of ordinances to work our way through. Temporary Ordinance 8-20 to amend, repeal, and replace an existing ordinance for non-union pay. This is coming through Finance. Did we deal with this one?
We're not, that's been pulled. We're not doing that one.
Oh, that one's off there. Gotcha. I, I printed the agenda yesterday.
Sorry. It was updated late, later this afternoon.
No worries. So then we got 920, which is the easement coming through economic development. This would be Mr. McDaniel. Let me just find you very quickly, and I'll unmute you. There you go.
Yes, I don't know if Stephen Wellsted's there, but I think I can handle this even if he's not. This is the easement for the property, should we approve the development at the flats on Memorial, but it's, the easement still needs to be approved anyway for us to have sanitary sewer easement and the easements we need through there for that property to be developed at some point in the future.
Very good. Any questions on this particular piece of legislation? Again, what we're going to try to do tonight best we can, if you know how to take yourself off mute, and you want to, you can. Otherwise, if you want to try to raise your hand or just gesticulate wildly, you know, I'll try to see you and unmute you. Yes, I see Holly, you're already unmuted. Go ahead.
Who's your second?
You, Mrs. Downhour, if you would.
Oh, okay. Good thing I asked.
Thank you.
We'll work on suspending for this tonight, right, Mr. McDaniel, and Miss Downhour would be the second. And any questions before we move on? All right, seeing none. My agenda doesn't have anything else. Holly, am I missing anything?
No, I don't think so, unless anybody has last chance, anything else for Finance?
I don't see anyone.
I don't either.
I'll make a motion to adjourn Finance.
And I'll second that motion.
All right, we are officially adjourned at 7:08 PM, according to my computer clock.
Very good. Thank you all very much. This is working out very, very well. I've gotten a couple of texts from IBP, who is suggesting that it looks great coming across the air. So I appreciate each of you. We're making a little history tonight. We'll take a quick break and convene the regular meeting of Lancaster City Council at 7:15.
There is no place like Lancaster, Ohio, and Fairfield County, and like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me, and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity, and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects through my volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County, and the state of Ohio to put on Kids and Cops Day, to be a part of Shop With a Cop alongside Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community, and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from, so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful, and just as important, that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at 740-654-2848 for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, ConnorInsuranceAgency.com.
Almost everyone needs a car to get from point A to point B, and many families have two or more cars. At Carriage Company, located at 1031 North Memorial Drive in Lancaster, we specialize in hard-to-find used cars. We can help you find exactly what you're looking for.
Come into the Carriage Company and check out our sweet deals.
Stop by today and let us help you, or visit us online at CarriageCompany.com. The Frankie Smith Funeral Home in Cremonetory in Lancaster, and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
So we're going to call the meeting to order, as we typically do here in just a moment. Not yet, because we're going to stand together and do the Pledge of Allegiance. You see the flag behind me and have a word of prayer. So if you'll stand with me, and we've got a couple of guests tonight that are going to stand over here and very loudly say the Pledge of Allegiance for us. Up that way a little bit, guys. Very loudly. Here we go. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you. Join me in a word of prayer tonight. Father, we thank you for this day and your blessings. We thank you for all you are doing for us and how you've just brought us through a successful but different time of Easter and Lent. Father, we pray that you would continue to be with us, help us tonight as we go about the work set before us. Continue, Lord, to be with our first responders, with medical professionals and others that are out on the front lines. May you bless them and keep them safe. Continue to be with those who are ill or who have otherwise been impacted by COVID-19, particularly in addition to illness, also those who have lost jobs and, and their sources of income during this time. We need your help. We ask for you to be with us tonight, and we'll continue to give you the praise and glory as you are, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you all very much. Hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council to order, and I'm going to unmute everyone very quickly as the clerk calls the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Here.
Mrs. Downhour?
Here.
Mr. Hall? Mr. Hall? He's still muted.
He's, I know, I'm trying to unmute him, but it's not happening. There he is. There he is.
Okay, Mr. James?
Here.
Mr. Matlin?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
Mr. Stoughton?
Here.
And Mrs. Teener?
Here.
Very good. Give me a second here. All right. All members of Lancaster City Council are in attendance this evening. Want to thank you all for your work in the Finance Committee meeting and for being here tonight. This is history-making, our first time doing this at a distance and via technology. I want to thank Interface Video for their help in making it all happen, and each one of you for being here. Reading and disposing of the Journal.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated March 23rd.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the Journal.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the Journal. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, give me a second. I'm unmuting everyone. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Very good. Thank you all very much. Reports of city officials?
Email dated March 24th, 2020 regarding notice of public hearing, number one, City of Lancaster, FY 2020 CDVG program submitted by Executive Director of the Community Development Department, Linda Bergy. Email dated March 26th, 2020 regarding Fairfield Department of Health accreditation announcement submitted by Service Safety Director Paul Martin. Email dated March 27th, 2020 regarding Mayor's declaration of emergency, March 27th, 2020, submitted by Mayor David Scheffler. Series of emails regarding the status of public hearing and test runs submitted by President Oll. Email dated April 6th, 2020 regarding Zoom background submitted by Treasurer Bob Wolfinger. Email dated 2020 regarding Zoom test runs submitted by Information Technology Director Mark Starr. Email dated April 6th, 2020 regarding test runs submitted by Mr. Matlin. Series of emails regarding the SAFER 2019 submitted by Chief David Ward. Email dated April 9th, 2020 regarding SAFER submitted by Mr. Stoughton. Email dated April 13th, 2020 regarding Finance Committee meeting agenda submitted by Mrs. Downhour. Email dated April 13th, 2020 regarding park certification submitted by Superintendent Mike. And dated April 13th, 2020 regarding COVID-19 general fund budget submitted by Treasurer Bob Wolfinger.
Thank you very much. And I'll just note that during this time, and then also throughout the meeting, as each council member will need to vote, I'll be unmuting everyone. That includes members of the administration, so if there's any background noise you could eliminate during our meeting, we surely would appreciate that. With that, Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports to city officials.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports to city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Are there any communications?
There are three. Email dated March 26th, 2020 regarding the Lancaster City Council Letter on Flats letter submitted by Lloyd Helber. Email dated March 31st, 2020 regarding Timbertop submitted by Robert G. Connolly. And finally, an email dated April 13th, 2020 regarding legislation before Lancaster City Council submitted by a
Thank you very much, Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any special presentations or awards tonight?
There are none to be presented.
Are there any petitions or memorials?
There are none to be presented.
We have no one present from the public within our meeting tonight, though we welcome anyone who would be watching via the live stream or Spectrum 1021, and thank you for your attendance in those, in those ways this evening. Are there reports of standing committees?
There is one. Finance Committee meeting minutes for March 23rd, 2020 submitted by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there reports of special committees?
There are none to be presented.
There are no public hearings scheduled for tonight, given the postponing of the ones that we did have scheduled, until we can once again return in person and welcome the public back to our meetings. With that, we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of Temporary Resolution 45-20.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance in the Parks and Recreation Fund 212 and amend the certificate with the county auditor, offered by Mrs. Teener, second by Mr. Matlin.
Ms. Teener?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council place on the table Temporary Resolution Number 4520.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to place upon the table Temporary Resolution 45-20. No discussion is permitted with a motion to place on the table. I will be unmuting everyone. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 45-20 has been placed upon the table. We have no resolutions up for second reading. We'll move to the first reading of Temporary Resolution 59-20.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and to amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in the Vawa Fund 225, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Ms. Downhour?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Resolution temporarily numbered 59-20. Second?
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 59-20. Discussion, Ms. Downhour?
I'll save it.
Very good. Any discussion on the motion to suspend? You'll need to wave your hand, because everyone's muted at this particular time. All right, I'm unmuting everyone. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Ms. Downhour?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Resolution temporarily numbered 59-20. Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 59-20. Discussion, Ms. Downhour?
Yes, this resolution is so that we can purchase two laptops and two docking stations for use by the prosecutors, and it will be coming out of the Vawa Fund.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Downhour. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Anyone? All right, I'm unmuting everyone. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt? I'm sorry, Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Sorry, didn't hear you. Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
I need that one again.
I'm sorry?
The last one I missed.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Very good. All right, thank you very much. Motion passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 59-20 has passed. We'll now move to Temporary Resolution 60-20.
A resolution appropriations with the county auditor in the general fund 101, offered by Mrs. Downhour, second by Mr. Stoughton.
Downhour?
First of two readings, please.
First reading, then, on Temporary Resolution 60-20. We don't have Temporary Resolution 61-20.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered and to amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor in the Park Fund 212, offered by Mrs. Teener, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Ms. Teener? Ms. Teener.
And Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion uh, that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading on temporary resolution sixty-one twenty. Second.
We have a motion in the second to wait, to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading on temporary resolution sixty-one dash twenty. Discussion.
I wait.
She'll wait until the motion to pass for their discussion or any discussion on the motion to suspend. Alright, if not, I'll unmute everyone, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Ms. Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution sixty-one twenty. Second.
I have a motion in a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution sixty-one dash twenty. Discussion.
Yeah, this is uh, the um, hiring of uh, oh, I'm so sorry. I um, this, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, since the COVID nineteen, uh, there were people that had paid for fees to do activities in the public department. And since the parks are all closed now, uh, we will uh, need to reimburse them for the fees that they had paid for events that they wanted to do.
Okay, very good. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Okay, everyone's unmuted, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Temporary resolution sixty-one dash twenty passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution sixty-two dash twenty.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise bids and enter into a contract for the hauling and disposal of municipal uh, solid waste for the City of Lancaster Sanitation Department, offered, and second by Mr.
Ms. Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading on temporary resolution sixty-two twenty.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution sixty-two dash twenty. Discussion, Ms. Teener.
I'll wait until the next motion, please.
Discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Ms. Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution sixty-two twenty.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution sixty-two dash twenty. Ms. Teener.
Yeah, Sanitation Department, this is their seventh year of a uh, seven-year contract for hauling um, for the sanitation department, and they just want to go out to bid uh, because the uh, contract will end at the end of the year. They're going to go out to bid for the hauling. And dispose of uh, trash.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Alright, please, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Temporary resolution sixty-two dash twenty passes nine to zero. Now, resolution, temporary resolution sixty-three dash twenty.
A resolution authorizing the Lancaster Fire Department to apply for the twenty-twenty Homeland Security stop and for adequate fire and emergency response safer grant, offered by Mrs. Bobbitt, second by Mr. Matlin.
Ms. Bobbitt.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings on temporary resolution number sixty-three twenty.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading on temporary resolution sixty-three dash twenty. Discussion, Ms. Bobbitt.
Nothing at this time.
Discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Ms. Bobbitt.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution number sixty-three twenty.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution sixty-three dash twenty. Discussion, Ms. Bobbitt.
Thank you, um, as we heard from the chief earlier during finance, uh, this is a safer grant, uh, that's the name of it. It's an opportunity right now for them to write a grant that uh, perhaps we will take advantage of uh, later on in the year, but this is just to uh, write the grant and see um, see what happens.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Okay, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Temporary resolution sixty-three dash twenty passes nine to zero. Are there further resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, then we'll move to the reading of ordinances, beginning with the second reading of temporary ordinance six dash twenty.
An ordinance amending the zoning map for the twelve-point-six-four-six acre tract, parcel number zero-five-three-four-zero-zero-zero-zero-seven-zero-zero behind twenty-five-thirty-five East Main Street. I, Mr. McDaniel, second by Mr. Stoughton.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes, it'll be a second of three readings.
Second reading then on temporary ordinance six dash twenty. We now have first reading on temporary ordinance nine dash twenty.
An ordinance to accept an easement necessary for a sanitary sewer, offered by Mr. McDaniel, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of ordinance temporary numbered nine dash twenty.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary ordinance nine dash twenty. Discussion, Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, this is uh, to obtain a sanitary sewer easement for the uh, development behind Ohio Health on Memorial Drive between uh, Memorial and Nelson Road. Uh, it's necessary for any development that might take place there.
Okay, very good. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Alright, give me a second here to unmute everyone. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that, that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record ordinance temporarily numbered nine dash twenty.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance nine dash twenty. Further discussion, Mr. McDaniel?
I have nothing else.
Discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt.
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour. Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. James.
Yes.
Mr. Matlin.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover.
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton.
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener.
Yes.
Those your dogs, I hear?
Actually, no. Not mine.
Oh, that's funny, alright. Uh, motion to pass temporary ordinance nine twenty does pass nine to zero. Very good, are there further, are there further ordinances to come before city council this evening? Alright, seeing no one moving their hands around, then we'll move to tabled legislation. Is there any action on tabled legislation this evening? Okay, if not, we'll move to unfinished business. Does anyone have unfinished business tonight they would like to discuss? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. Does anyone have new business tonight they would like to discuss?
Mr. President, this is uh, Orman, uh, just a real quick um, note, I'm, I'm wondering if we have any reports of elevated levels of domestic violence because of the social distancing policies that are in place?
I see Chief Pilar is still on here, sir, I've unmuted you if you'd like to comment. Is the chief still with us? If not, maybe Mr. Martin could comment.
Yes, at, at this time, we're not having any elevated numbers. Of course, it is a concern of ours, uh, Councilman Hall. And uh, I would encourage everybody to make sure you be good at home and have good relationships with your wife and your husband and your children. But uh, right now, we've not seen any elevated numbers. I'm actually checking every day how many domestic violence calls we run on, as well as persons that are in crisis to see if there's an increase. It's been holding barely steady, but no, I would not say we've had an increase.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
That's helpful. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hall. Anyone else have something tonight? Mr. Matlin, I saw you, you're all click unmute, or you can click unmute and we'll see if we can make it happen here. There, you're good.
I'd like to just, first of all, those were my dogs barking, so sorry about that.
No problem, I'm just gonna blame Cory naturally.
You're right. The um, going back to the budget and what Treasurer Wolfinger um, went over with the um, carryover and the bond rating, as a, a layperson, it'd be really great if I got an explanation, not tonight, but maybe uh, next week or two. I could stop down and get an explanation on what the bond rating means to the city, uh, the impact um, it has if it were to go down. If we had to spend into the carryover money, um, a lot of questions about that. Um, I, I understand completely needing to have money in the bank um, for the first of the year, but I just would, for my own education and I think maybe some other council people's education, what the, the bond rating does for us and what the impact to it, to us would be if it went down.
Mr. Wolfinger? I see Mr. Wolfinger moving around some. You still with us, Mr. Wolfinger? Uh, I think we may have lost Bob.
Yeah, his internet connection looked bad.
A little dodgy, yeah, we'll, we'll see if he pops back on, but um, Mr. Matlin, I think your comments are, are good and I'm not sure that we all wouldn't benefit from better understanding the impact of the bond rating um, on the city and its finances going forward, should we have an issue here, and so I'm wondering, yes, I see Tricia, you're waving your hand. Maybe at the next meeting that we're planning, we could, and Bob, I see, oh, Bob's over in Dave's thing, so I'll unmute Bob, I see Tricia's unmuted.
I would say for Bob, Bob and I both, we, we can kind of get together and get something to counsel. Um, that would kind of show not only for Moody's bond rating, but you also have a state audit impact um, as they monitor, because they come into my office and audit our books every year, um, that uh, they also look at our carryover cash to support our expenses, um, so there's quite a few things going on um, of the importance of the carryover cash. So, I think Bob and I will work on that and then try to get something to all of council, that way you can better understand that that the, the importance of having a healthy carrier.
Go ahead, Bob.
Okay. I'll further comment, yes, it's with the bond rating and things of that nature, but it's for operating working capital. And if we get too low, the audit, auditor's office, State of Ohio, will declare a fiscal emergency for us. And if that's not rectified very quickly, they could actually take over the city of running the day-to-day operations from a financial perspective. If you might recall, probably about fourteen years ago, the city schools were in the same predicament. Uh, and they were on fiscal watch by the state auditor's office, and that's why, that's how some of us got together and passed that one-and-a-half percent income tax, uh, earned income for the schools. So, it's not only locally, but it's the state, and it's our so, our fluidness of operating the business and things of that nature. But we can also get together and work on something. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Bob. Mr. Stoughton, I saw your hand.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The other, you know, Jack, I, I love hearing that, I need to go spend some time with Mr. Wolfinger. And I would tell you that if you, any of you folks that, that haven't done it, would go spend some time with Bob and Trish and understand that, you know, we're not crying wolf, there are certain minimums we need to have to protect our bond rating on top of uh, protecting the cash that we have, and uh, uh, it would be time well spent, I, and I, I would encourage you all to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. Mr. Matlin, anything else on this?
No, uh, I will get in touch with the treasurer and see if there's a way I can get down there without infecting anybody, so, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Matlin, yes, I see you, Mr. McDaniel, and uh, we'll look forward to whatever information the treasurer and the auditor can get sent out to us generally as well. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, I, you know, I, I understand what uh, Councilman Stoughton's saying and, and uh, understand the information presented from Bob and uh, the question that uh, Mr. Matlin asked is, I'd like, what is the threshold where we are impacted? You know, we know, we know how much money we have, at what point and what levels are we impacted where we uh, might affect the bond rating and/or uh, some other potential uh, uh, I guess negatives that we might get from the state auditor, et cetera. What are those thresholds? Not what we'd like to have, what we think we should have, what are the actual thresholds where we are impacted? And also, I'm gonna preach to the choir here, but you know, there's certain things that we have to provide. Uh, police, fire, EMS, um, uh, sanitation, at some point, you know, it's nice that we're gonna look at reducing budgets by ten percent, but that's not necessarily going to solve our problem. And uh, Mr. Stoughton referred to some action we might be able to take regarding commuter tax, I understand how unpopular that is, but those are all things we should all be speaking and, and talking about and trying to figure out the best course forward, but uh, you know, when someone needs help from the City of Lancaster, often they're calling nine-one-one and they're expecting services to be provided. And that's a question for our citizens as well as ourselves, how do we best provide those services? How do we fund those services? Should we be significantly impacted by COVID nineteen and the federal government doesn't step to the plate and help, help us in some, some regard at some point? So, a lot of things to think about, but uh, I would like more detail from um, the perspective of how we're impacted by this bond rating and at what level, um, you know, we've got money in the treasury of the City of Lancaster that belongs to taxpayers and should be used for taxpayer expenses, such as police, fire, EMS, et cetera, uh, but I understand the carryover, I understand the necessity of it. Um, I'd just like to know what, what threshold is the actual impact take place?
Yeah, Bob.
That's all.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I can't give you a specific threshold, and I would suggest it's probably not in writing anywhere at the state. It's gonna be a judgment call of how well and how long we can meet our day-to-day operations uh, of payroll and expenses and things of that nature. You, you saw the first chart, it, you know, ten percent hit right there of, is over two million bucks. And that takes your five down to, or your four, forty, down to three-eight, and, and if it keeps persisting, it goes on down to the point that the state determines we can't run our own shop. Now, you're absolutely right, we have to provide fireplace safety forces to our citizens as well as the uh, enterprise uh, departments. They'll come in, they'll put money in it, and they'll send somebody down here that will run the city, quite frankly. That's very desperate moves, but I don't think we want anybody from out of town making these kind of decisions on a local basis, and I'm not saying this from a fair perspective, it's just the best way. It's just the best way that I can answer your question. It is, it's a judgment call by the, uh, state auditor's office. Thank you. Trish, do you have a comment?
Go ahead, Trish.
Um, Bob's absolutely right. I mean, I don't think state audit really has anything in writing. I mean, I'll go through, we'll go through and check, but I seriously doubt they have something in writing. It's just more when they come in and look at a comparison of expenses versus cash flow and needs of that nature, they make a judgment call and kind of either put you on fiscal watch, fiscal emergency, or what have you. Watch means that they're, they're watching closely because they're seeing your cash reserves, um, are, are depleted. Um, emergence, um, emergencies where they come in and just kind of go through and they take over the city and start running it how they see fit, um, and we don't have a say in it. Um, so it'll be look, and we'll get back with you to try to give something an overview, but, uh, which helps you understand a little bit better, but yeah, a lot of it's going to be the state's judgment call, but, um, we'll try to get you something.
I'm fairly confident it isn't twenty-five percent, is my point.
You're right. Twenty-five percent is usually, uh, uh, Moody's and or GFOA, their standard is a good business operating. They actually like more, but theirs is like a minimum of twenty-five percent your first quarter. But we just need to see what the, you know, what would attract the state's attention, like you're saying, to try to see where those different basis points are.
Great, thank you.
Thank you to, uh, the treasurer and the auditor. Thank you, Mr. McDaniel as well. I see Ms. Bobbitt here, so go ahead, ma'am.
Well, you've already, our, Don just answered it there because I was going to ask, you know, once again about the twenty-five percent. But it was just answered there. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Bobbitt. Anyone else have something on this topic in particular regarding city finances, the budget, and the information that's been presented this evening? No? Well, I want to say thank you once again to, uh, the, to Mr. Stoughton and Ms. Downhour and, uh, for leading us through a great discussion earlier on, and to each member of the administration that provided information and context uh, regarding our current situation and, and where perhaps we're heading. Uh, I think that's, uh, was good information, was a lot of information. And, uh, we'll look forward to seeing additional info as it continues to come out here over the next couple of weeks. So thanks to each of you for your work on that. All right, is there other new business this evening that anyone would like to discuss? I'm looking around. Oh, Bob, I see you. Are you saying something, Bob? No, okay, no, you're muted. Okay, that's good. All right, I don't see anyone else with, uh, for, for new business. And so, uh, we'll, we'll move forward. Uh, the only other thing I'll just mention briefly again is thanks to Interface Video for making this happen. Uh, uh, it's, uh, I know Shane's been working hard to, uh, make sure everything's coming out right on the stream and on, and on the broadcast. So we appreciate that, especially given the fact that this is the first time that, that we've done this. All right, I'm gonna make sure the clerk's unmuted here and ask her to read our upcoming meeting schedule.
Coming regular meetings, April twenty-seventh at six thirty PM here in Council Chamber, possibly via Zoom. That's the president's call. I'm so used to it. Um, the meeting following is May fourth at six thirty PM. Upcoming committee meetings. We have finance committee, April twenty-seventh at six PM. Uh, location to be determined. Finance committee, May fourth at six PM. Again, location to be determined. And the water, water pollution control, May thirteenth at eight PM, or eight AM at the water, water pollution control conference room.
Very good. Thank you very much, and we'll just kind of see what happens. I believe the governor's order extends through April. So it's very possible that our next meeting will be like this as well. And then the first of May, when the governor comes out with, uh, any extension or, or, um, perhaps loosening of restrictions, we'll, we'll make decisions as we go, as we go from there. Are there any bills this evening?
There is one bill to PNC for publications and MC, MNCO, one hundred eight dollars and fifty cents for publication of legislation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Thank you.
President, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills.
Second?
We have a motion in the second to pay the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Very good. Motion carries. We will pay the bills. Is there need tonight for an executive session? All right, seeing none, then a motion to adjourn is in order.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second?
We have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting. I'm unmuting everyone, just so you know. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We are adjourned. Let me just say very quickly as we adjourn that, um, the signatures for the legislation tonight, um, if we can get permission from each member of council who has legislation to simply type your name into, into that legislation as your approval. I believe that's, uh, Law Director Alum, are you still with us?
I am.
Is that, that's what you were looking for, right?
Yeah, I'm just looking for, if you would, uh, Mr. President, just get a verbal authorization from those with legislation that, uh, the council clerk can, um, basically just put their names to the legislation. Thank you.
Okay, very good. So how about we do this? If you have, if you have a problem with it, let me know. I see, yes, I see Ms. Downhour. Go ahead.
Is there a reason why we couldn't use DocuSign and do an electronic signature?
I don't know that there, I don't know that there is a reason why we couldn't do that, other than i- is, is that a free service we can all just get a hold of?
Um, I think there's a, a limited free license that we could get. Uh, and only one person who would initiate the envelope for signature, so the clerk would be the only person that would be required to have the license, and then the council members who are signing would not need to have a license to sign. Anybody can sign, so.
Yeah. I think, I think that that's something to good look into as this continues forward. For this particular time, we may just need to forge ahead and see if we can get permission to have it typed in. Um, since we want to make sure that this legislation that we pass tonight can take effect as quickly as possible. So does anyone have a, a major issue with the clerk typing your name in as a signature? Anyone who had legislation passed tonight? I hear knows. Ms. Bobbitt?
No, I have no, she can sign my name. Type it in, whatever.
No objection here.
Very good. Others who had legislation, any objections? All right, hearing none, then that's what we'll do, and so the clerk can move ahead with making that happen. And with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much for your time and have a great evening.